We are. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order at 5:10 PM. So first, let's start with the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve?
I will move to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, it passes. Were you able to record Anna her?
I did not. Did you guys vote on the approval of the agenda from here?
What are we doing this? Trustee Yu, can you hear?
We have quorum to continue without them or cancel the meeting.
No, we can't hear her again.
I think maybe we just continue until I can. We can hear you now, Ellie.
Can you please revoice your vote?
Yes, I said aye.
Thank you, all right, it passes. So onward to the President's opening remarks, I want to first share with you that we've received a new government code law that relates to board participants on Zoom. So this law permits the participation of a board member remotely through a process. So pursuant to Government Code Section 54953F, there's been a request received after the agenda was posted from Board Member Young He and Board Member Abdoli to participate in tonight's meeting remotely. And for this reason, this falls under the terms set out in this government code, permitting remote participation. So I will ask a board member, Young He and Abdoli, whether this information is correct. So could you please share for the record that you wish to participate remotely?
I wish to participate. I, from the first part of this meeting, will be participating remotely and hopefully be there in person very shortly.
Wonderful. Okay. So I have to ask you if I have to ask you if there are any other individuals 18 years of age or older present in the location you are at. Trustee Young He?
Yes, I have my A and E.
Okay, thank you. And Trustee Abdoli?
No, I'm out.
All right. So now I'm asking for a motion to approve this request.
I move to approve the request.
May I have a second?
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, so we can now officially start our meeting. So communications to the
I think there's roll call.
Oh, my apologies, roll call. Thank you very much. Trustee Nakatani, would you now take roll call?
Trustee Sernsataj?
Present.
Trustee Yu? Trustee Yu?
Present.
Trustee Abdoli?
Present.
Trustee Katz?
Present.
And I'm Trustee Nakatani, and I'm here.
All right. Now let's go on to approval of the agenda.
We did that.
Okay, we did that already. We're out of order, but here we go. All right, now communication to the board. So the board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and provides us time for members of the audience to address the board only on items on the agenda. And I'd like to read you the Brown Act information related to special meetings because they're very different than regular scheduled meetings. So the Brown Act requires that agendas for special meetings provide an opportunity for members of the public to address the board concerning any item listed on this special meeting agenda prior to the board's consideration of the item. And for tonight, the board's consideration is a board study session on board vision and priorities. So that is what this study session is for. Unlike regular meetings, however, public comment in a special meeting does not extend to non-agenda items. So there's no non-agenda item section. Tonight, the only item on the agenda is a discussion, an action item, to discuss board visioning and priorities for this meeting. All right. So do we have any public comment on this agenda item?
We do. We have two public comments on the one agenda item. One is Jessica Newman and one is Elizabeth Moriarty.
Okay, may I? So Jessica, do you know that you can only speak to the item of visioning and priorities?
I have support vision here that I read through. I just had a couple of comments on that.
From, thank you for, oh, from our previous board vision. Thank you very much. All right, come on up. Thank you.
Can you hear me? I'm Jessica Newman. I've got two kids in the district. We've been in the district for six years. I've read through the board vision that was attached to today's agenda. And I had two comments. I think it looks great. I think these are a fantastic start. I very strongly agree that with the fourth bullet here, that every student should be at the center of our work, of the board's work, of the district's work. I do want to tie that into the idea of communication. I think that parents, I think in the vision, I think you should recognize that parents are the voice of the students. When you look at the end here, you talk about transparency, improved communication, effective and useful surveys. I understand that the way that the Brown Act works, a lot of the communication is kind of one way and then one way back. And I find that to be very ineffective. I know there's nothing that you all can do about that, but I would suggest that you really consider something like town hall meetings where a discussion can be had. Or surveys such as the one we had last year about lengthening the school day. You know, I know that that survey was answered by a lot of parents and, at least to my knowledge, wasn't kind of reported out on too much. I think it would be nice to hear what the parents have to say and for you to share that back with the public, whether that's through surveys, emails to the board, or like I said, some kind of town hall meeting. I think people would really appreciate the chance to engage and dialogue rather than kind of one way back and forth. The second comment I have is on this paragraph at the bottom of the first page, about all students to progress one full school year in subjects, no matter where they are starting from. And this paragraph talks about that there is naturally, there naturally is less differentiated instruction in a single-subject classroom. I'm not sure why that's the case. I would think actually the opposite would be true, that if you have a single subject, that it would be easier to differentiate the learning. I would say that if this is the case, I'd be curious for someone to point to some research as to why that is. I think that students really should progress a full year regardless of where they start from. I don't think there's a point where we can say like, kids have learned too much math in seventh grade. I just, that's just not possible to me. I think we have great teachers and I think they probably could figure out ways to do differentiating. If we need more help, more TOSAs in middle school maybe, like we have in elementary schools, I think there's probably a lot of ways to make that happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. And we have Elizabeth Moriarty.
I am getting a lot of texts. There's a ton of feedback on the Zoom. And someone said that maybe both laptops need to be muted. I'm not sure. But before I start. It's hard people to hear. I'm Liz Moriarty. I have two boys in the district, a third grader and a sixth grader, and I have a 10th grader as well. I'm also a kid of board chair. I'm not speaking on behalf of that organization, but it certainly informs my perspective. I too reviewed this vision document, which is obviously a draft. And I was happy to see language about being student-focused. That's really important to me. That's been one of Dr. Berman's key initiatives, and I think we have to always keep that in mind. But that's, there's a complete disconnect between that focus and this board's actual actions in the last, what, barely two months that you've come together. And that's very alarming. You're losing an excellent superintendent.
Actually, Liz, that's not a comment that's related to the visioning and priorities.
Oh, yes, actually, it's directly related.
So we can, you can provide, this is a study session, actually, these are just cut and paste of all the board members. They put their ideas in. And now we're going to create a draft. So it's just about the vision of this board. So if you could finish your comments related to
Well, you've now taken up like a bunch of my time, and this is directly related to what I think this board's priority should be, which is what I understand you're talking about today. Am I right?
It's about the vision, the visioning statement that we're going to create. So if you have any comments related to that, but anything other, outside of that, is not part of the purview of
Okay.
our meeting.
All right. So I think that your focus and your priority should be what's in the best interests of the students of Mill Valley. Okay? The only relationship that you actually directly manage as in like an employment context is that with the superintendent. Okay? And coming into this job, we are now, you've been in, what, two months? And what I would have expected from people overseeing only one person is to fully understand the programs and policies they have implemented and to really get to know them and really support them when they are mid-contract. And clearly, that did not happen.
Okay, that has nothing to do with visioning, so thank you.
But it, but it does. Because if you're not prioritizing our students, which I haven't seen proof of that yet. I don't know what happened in the closed session, but it doesn't look to me like you're prioritizing the best interests of our students. And that should be your priority. And I think I should be allowed to say that. And in the midst of this crisis that you have created,
Liz, I'm going to ask you to stop your comments because you're now going off on something that doesn't have anything to do with our vision priorities.
I actually spent time watching, my personal time, watching the retreat at Aqua. I went back and watched your board meeting on January 12th because I knew that that meeting had happened after your closed session, when this decision had been made. And it looks to me like you're spending an inordinate amount of time on administrative details like committees to be comprised and minutes when there's a much bigger issues. And I am asking you to please prioritize the students of Mill Valley as you go through this next process. I'll save the rest of my comments for the next meeting.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other comments on Zoom? All right, thank you very much. So now we're going to hand it over to Superintendent Berman, who's going to facilitate our visioning session.
So the board has requested to carry on the conversation from the facilitated conversation by Mark Ecker from Leadership Associates. The board has determined that they will meet with him again in February. And so this opportunity is here for you today to have the continued conversation you wish. Everyone's notes that they compiled that day are in this document. And you may go forth from here.
Well, so actually, the request was that this vision statement would be facilitated by you, and we would create a draft, so.
I'm happy to type.
Was that our understanding?
I, I, we, I think we're open to anything. Maybe a suggestion on what, what would be a good starting point for, for us to kick off on?
I think it would be great for you to describe what you see as this document or this statement. And I'm happy to help take notes and record that.
I don't know where to start.
Yes, because, because our understanding was that, in my reading of the, and listening of the videotape, is that we were going to have a facilitated session with you, not a note-taking session, but a facilitated session, which was what I remember Natalie, you had brought up in my revisiting it. So in facilitation, I thought it would be similar to what we had with our Mark Ecker.
Okay, I'm happy to stand by the chart and carry forth where you were.
So we'll need some guidance on how to make that happen.
And I, and I think where we left off was we were all just kind of tossing around ideas in mid-conversation. So unfortunately, we've had like our flow disrupted. But I think it's easy enough. I don't think you need to stand at the chart because I think we all have the and I assume Yunhee has it and Ellie is not here yet, but will be soon. But I don't think that you need to stand there. Thank you, though.
So do you have any thoughts, though, on how to, how we should put this together?
Is that Ellie trying to? Thank you. Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, so first was that the board should determine all the spokes of the star. So if you will start by giving feedback related to why you would like a board vision or why, as you're imperative as a board, that you would like to record.
I think that what the, I don't know if anybody remembers differently, but I think that the spoke was to get to kind of who's involved, what, why, and where about the vision. And we did that, and that's why we're here. So that like, why for a vision is that we need a common philosophy? We already did all of that, so now we're supposed to create a draft vision statement. So we're supposed to move from that to a draft vision statement and a facilitated process for that.
So, so I guess I'll, I'll kick things off.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I think it's just to ensure, like we talked about before, to ensure we're all on the same page in all decisions that we're making and things that we're discussing going forward, that we are all aligned and on the same page with what's at the center and what's at the heart of what we are trying to do as a board. I think, you know, we were all, we were each asked to just kind of put in some ideas and I think it was just white space. So I think that's why you see a lot of kind of different, different approach with the bullet points and the writing on the two pages. I think that with, under possible vision statements, both the first bullet point as well as below the bullet points, kind of the next header below that, I think those are probably the two closest to actually having a vision statement, where it encompasses what we want to try have at the heart of what we're doing. I think when it comes to some of the stuff and some of the ideas that we put out there, including, I'm looking at some of the ones that I put in. Think it was more of kind of a district focus and maybe ensuring that we are looking at what as a board we want for, for the district and how we will work together and what we will have at the heart of our decisions. So I think the, you know, the focus on accountability, transparency, I think, you know, evidence-based decisions and, you know, having that, you know, students at the heart of everything that we're doing, I think is, kind of if you had to come up with, that's obviously not a sentence, but if you had to come up with a one or two-sentence vision statement, then it would encompass that with how we are acting as, as a board and what we have at the, at the center of what we're doing.
Right. And then we, we kind of, we just started this conversation, so we didn't get very far. And then we have all of our notes in here. And we talked, though, about, let's talk about length. Like, how long is this vision statement? Is it two sentences? Is it three sentences? Is it a paragraph? I know we didn't want more than one page. We talked about it being succinct, broad, you know, but easily digestible, was it words I remember? So I think we could start there. And obviously, we have shared, there's a lot of commonalities between all of our thoughts here. So maybe we start with, pick one and we can branch off from there?
Well, I can share with you that under the possible vision statement language, that sentence is something I just tried to craft my own in a vacuum by looking up that a vision is basically your why. So trying to, trying to come up with what might be our why. And so that was my first stab at it. And then the bullets might be, you know, some of the priorities or the anchors, as we heard from some of our constituents today, to guide our vision. So that's, as members of our board team, clearly focused on continuous improvement that is informed by effective governance practices. We provide high-level accountability, transparency, and oversight with every Mill Valley School District student at the center of our work. So, and, and then I know we had talked about having priorities. So those are the bullets that I had down there. So I, and I don't know, perhaps we can hear from Young He and, and from Ellie as to their contributions because these didn't have any names attached and, and if they had any thoughts around formulating the statement.
So I did not ask for a writing for it. And then I tried to write, we think, this area is wrong for me. I believe this is a wrong kind of thing. What I would like to suggest is maybe the ones that, like, NVSD students are at the center of our work and have the bullet points of what that means and what we should do as our board for the next few years. Which is ensure I can, I guess, have children, children, and I have some, some bullet points that we kind of have agree on our board's purpose, none of us, we, you know, try to work with the superintendent to, to accomplish this goal. And obviously, we are not thinking, we should have a board for the district or, you know, teach our students what to do. And then, and then for safety, right, and that also would be SEL, social, which is also, is the safety. As everybody else, what's going on in the world. And then I think, yes, here, this is the, this is the.
Okay, so I've recorded the overall statement and then the three focus areas. Do you see something more in the vision overall?
Well, welcome, by the way, Ellie.
Thank you.
Glad you're here in one piece.
Apologies for being late.
No problem. We were, we were, so maybe we can get Ellie up to speed by sharing what you
I was just listening. Sorry. I literally was listening to while Yunhee was speaking as I walked in.
All right. So you're on, so did you have some comments regarding your feed, you know, your feedback on our conversation so far? Because everybody's provided input.
Not yet, but let me pull everything up and I will.
Okay, and we have, we have a copy for you, too. Okay, front and back. Okay, great. So I'm sorry, I couldn't hear Young He's last suggestion at the end. Could anybody, did, did you hear her suggestion? Board members?
No. Please repeat.
Uh, which part, I talked about starting the sentence, that, that students consider every decision we make, and that maybe has bullet points because that should be the biggest focus for a daily picture. And this is what we focus on. And I think since we are so similar in anything, we are, you know, the visioning, you know, I'm hoping to get a better needs, you know, with various academics, you know, by, you know, differentiating, and, 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 and everything else. As far as the safety, you know, happy, emotionally happy, and, you know, children safe. And then, you know, another one is governance, transparency, education, and the safety.
I, I will say, I, I don't know if I, I think effective governance practices has to inform, absolutely inform things that we're doing. I don't know if it's part of a vision. So I think maybe, Michelle, if you could speak to, to that? Because I would see it as more broad with the, the student-centered focus and what we're looking for to be able to support the district in.
So in terms of board vision, which will be very different than district vision, but there could be some, I mean, that could be very different. And certainly, our roles are different. The crossover would be obviously students at the center of our work. But our effective governance practice could be part of a vision. And what I'm hearing Young He say, which, which may dovetail into the priorities, is if we take certain phrases like every Mill Valley School District student at the center of our work and we bullet three to five priorities. If we agree that high-level accountability is part of a vision, that we, as members, are, are, this is our why, that then we, we can do some bullets. And maybe with the, with the time that we have here, because we did have some technical difficulties. We have 25 minutes that we, am I right on that? We have 25 minutes?
I believe you had till 6:45.
Oh, okay, we've got, we have lots of time that we can then flesh out the various bullet points that would anchor the vision statement. So perhaps, so it sounds like that we have some interest in every Mill Valley School District student at the center of our work. Do we have consensus that that could be part of a vision statement?
I think that is the heart, front and center. That is the number one thing that we should be aligned on.
So that's, that's something that we can, we can, it has to be at the heart of the statement. Okay, is there anything else, you know, maybe we can chunk just thoughts?
But, yeah, I believe that as a, like a strategic plan, that's the, a district statement is different than our governance work. So I do, I do see the benefit of effective, effective governance practices as a board, you know, in our oversight role, that's totally different and separate than a strategic, you know, maybe something that the strategic plan says or something that language that's in the LCAP, which that would not be there. But I think for us as a governing board, I do find it to be helpful.
I would respectfully disagree. I just think that, there was a comment last time about we are supposed to be professionals who are coming in here, able to work with each other and to have session after session and spending just so much time focusing on ourselves and our family birth order just really doesn't sit right when we have work to do ahead of us. And so I actually would say that, that's not, I'm not here to learn how to
Well, that's
You know, I'm here to focus.
That's why we're here to flesh it out, though.
Totally. But I'm here to, you know, with every NVSD student being at the center of our work, that's what, my goal and why I come here. And so I think for me, spending our time committed to student outcomes, to student progress, to student satisfaction, to parent satisfaction, as we talked about, that's the voice of our students. To me, that's much more important than some of the other things.
So what might be helpful, just to pull out from all of our individual opinions? Because I, you know, I, I think we are more aligned on most of this than, you know, any disagreement and discussion might, might bring in. But I think if we just looked at whether the California State Board of Education vision or we're in county vision, then I think using that as kind of a platform to go off of and weave in our ideas, but they all seem to be very, very succinct and more kind of high-level, what, you know, what we want for, like, a vision should be something that we're aspiring to. And I think, you know, and I think accountability, transparency, you know, helping to support academic excellence, to Yunhee's point, all of that is what we should have kind of as the things that are driving us forward. And then the how is maybe supported by things like the governance and, you know, and some of them are kind of more particular things that come into what the district is, is doing. But I think for, you know, the California, for the California State Board of Education, the vision statement is, "All California students of the 21st century will attain the highest level of academic knowledge, applied learning, and performance skills to ensure fulfilling personal lives and careers and contribute to civic and economic progress in our diverse and changing democratic society," which is very lofty. So, so I think maybe if we pull ourselves kind of up to, you know, up to kind of a higher level like that, then, you know, it's ultimately kind of what we're going to stop and ask ourselves, are we, are we turning back to this vision to direct, to direct what we're doing? So I think it is a vision statement that is one sentence. I think maybe there's an accompanying mission statement and then maybe three or four main goals. And we keep it short and sweet. And then in terms of the details and how that gets executed, then that's more of the, kind of the district, the LCAP, the strategic plan, and then what the administration focuses on. No thoughts?
Can you share again the name of the organization you just, I'm sorry, the name of the
The California State Board of Education?
That was the California State Board of Education.
and they're a cooperative effort. They describe who they are for schools, and, uh, they'll be a lighthouse of innovation, a beacon for new technologies. And in order to, to serve the diverse student body of, of that group, there'll be vocational offerings and programs. So they go on to describe kind of how, as an entity, they're going to provide that service. Um, and that, the vision is that there'll be one of excitement, excellence, and respect, and fully integrated into the educational life of the member districts. Vocational education will be seen as one of the hallmarks and prides of, um, of the various school districts they serve. So I wonder what, what the sentiment is of fellow board members. Do we want something that's more flushed out, which in one way would hold us more accountable, or more of a overarching, you know, why, high-level vision that, that we can anchor priorities to?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can. So, I think we're talking about two things. To me, vision is kind of one big idea, and then there's a focus area, right? Maybe that's two different things. So, I'd like to make the question kind of very lofty, simple vision, and also maybe with Mark Ecker's idea. I, I'm just looking at his point, where you're how, when, all that, you know, come up with, or, although it was not many, but maybe three bullet points of what our focus should be. There are two different things, right?
I mean, I think I'd like to understand, kind of to Yoonhee's point, I guess, from you, um, what is your objective? What do you want out of this? Because in my mind, if we spend more than this already almost two-hour session, and don't come out with this done, we have done it a disservice to our students. We have things that we need to focus on, and if it takes us, if, if there's another format that you're interested in, or something else, and we can't just get this done tonight, and there's a whole nother session, and use of board time and resources to come back to this again, I don't think that's a good use of time. So whatever the format, I think we need to get this done today. This is something that is a priority, and be done, and be able to start effectively working. But we can't keep having a new format, and now contemplating trying it a different way, like-
So I think what we're doing is, we're, we're working as a team with different, because I thought we were going to have a facilitated session, so we'd be, we'd, we would have, we would have a structure in which to, in a structure in which to create this vision statement, so-
But we don't even seem to know what we want, so what would a facilitate, I, I guess we're asking someone else to guide us to something that we haven't even said, I mean-
That's, that's traditionally what you do in these kind of workshops, as we had, um, and, and as we had, for example, last year, if you recall, in our board handbook workshop, where it's facilitated, there's a process, we provide input, we get an out, we get a product.
I mean, that's what we can do right now.
So I guess, back to the point is, right, are we, are we all happy with a high-level vision statement, um, with a few bullet points, which it seems that Young He has offered?
Yes.
Okay. Then now we need to-
We all can go, okay. Right? We all agree on the focus. There aren't that many different reasons. We all want, we all want, we all want this, you know, you know, it's like all kids, for us, differentiating learning, same thing, right? So I think it would not be so hard for us to have one that, because everybody wanted, you know, everybody agreed that, that children should be at the center of our focus, and then, and then hash out people, bullet points from, you know, all our suggestions. And I think we all agree what's important. So I don't, I, I think we should pick, because this is a vision, so everybody should agree, we should pick a bullet point that we all agree on, and I don't think it would be a lot of possible.
Why don't we start with, just, every Mill Valley School District student is at the center of our work, period?
Perfect.
We will achieve this by-
How about we, can we put that up on a chart? How about that? Then we can maybe wordsmith, and we can all see it?
Yes.
So maybe-
Just, just tell, tell, tell me, and I'll type it, because I'm a fast typer, so.
So this way, what we, if we put it all together, then we can, we can-
Oh, I was just going to type it in the, I know Anna's also been doing this, updating the Google document, um, that has-
I've highlighted, I've written in the highlighted yellow.
Thank you.
Well, for our public who doesn't see this, would it, would it be beneficial, though, for them to see what we're actually working on? You know, just to have a vision-
I think we're saying it out loud, so.
We're saying it out loud, and this is our board getting together to hash it out, so let's just-
All right. Let's do it.
So we have our main statement.
Is everyone happy with that first statement?
Yeah.
So, you're saying I can find it in our Google Doc?
Yeah, the board vision that was shared.
And it's being typed here. Okay, so I'll have to look for that.
And Natalie has added. So, here we go.
And, and, yes.
Yeah. Every Mill Valley School District student-
Right, just at the bottom of it.
Is at the center of our work.
Okay, so what, so our why is, um, how about as members of, of our board team, we believe that, and then-
So we believe, we believe in-
Put that at the beginning.
A focus on academic excellence, um, transparency, and accountability to all of the stakeholders in our community.
To all of the stakeholders.
And, an equitable and inclusive environment for everyone in the district.
So Young He, you're also with us, seeing the work we're doing in the Google Doc? I can't, sorry, we can't hear you. Say that again?
I can't see the Google Doc.
Um, it should have been shared with her. Anna's typing and updating it.
I, I'm typing in the highlighted yellow.
Oh, sorry. I'm seeing Anna's name.
Um, and it's emailed to all board members. It was, um, provided by Anna earlier today.
Yes.
So Young He, it's in an email, and it's a Google Doc?
And, and Kimberly just reshared it, so.
Okay, great. Then she can add to it.
Sorry, Kimberly, it's throwing me off that I keep saying Anna's name.
I mean, I'll just throw, I'm fine with all of the possible vision statement bullets, if we wanted to keep those bullets. I think every one of them is, I, I have no issues with any of the content of any of those. So where it says possible vision statement, it could say, you know, um, values and priorities, or something, but I, I'm, I'm good with all of those bullets.
Thanks.
Or those-
Even the, even the first part that has effective governance, I just want to, yeah.
Yeah, I think, in there, where it's just informed by effective, I mean, that's fine, that's enough, like, that's all we need.
Just checking.
Yeah. I appreciate that.
So are we, I'm sorry, tracking, are we saying that this, this possible vision statement with the bullets underneath, you'd want to include the bullets below as well?
Like, I'm saying we could just change the word possible vision statement to values, and then just keep those, or whatever terminology we'd like.
Every Mill Valley student is at the center of our work. Here are our values.
Done. I like it. Like, something like that. I mean, I don't think we need a-
Focus on that. And we can, it, it doesn't need to be wordsmithed into a perfect, beautiful sentence.
Yeah. I mean, we get what it means, and that's the key.
We want this, we want this.
I think the key is value, value.
I think, I think adding, so if we're going to include this, and I think that the bullet points under possible vision statements, then I think that's fine. But maybe one of our values is, you know, collaboration in order to, you know, to aspire to, uh, collaboration in order to aspire to help each other be better. And I think that is, um, with the, you know, with the educators, I think that's as a board, I think it's together with the superintendent, and the administration, and the parents.
Is that a little bit the next section?
Um, well, yes, that is pulling in.
Because that's how I read that, and I'm good with that next section, too.
To create a board that works together with the superintendent.
Yeah, like, um, our goal is to create a board, and I like all of these values. But again, I mean, I want others, I'm just saying, like, I'm good with those so far elements.
Mm-hmm.
Did you also write those?
And where, and where is that here now, for me to see?
It's the highlighted, go, go up, yeah.
Up here. Young He, can you see now the highlighted board vision statement that we're starting to draft on your computer? Sounds like she can.
I can't, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Because now we have an initial statement that we all have agreed to. We have some values. We have a goal of working together with the superintendent in a collaborative manner to achieve these items.
Okay, can we go up to the top part? So every Mill Valley District student is at the center of our work as members, as members of our board team. We believe in a, um, we, we've missed the whole part, though, about we believe, uh, as members of a board team, we're focused on continuous improvement.
It's, it's under the values.
It's under the, yeah, right there.
So it's clearly focused on, uh, our values, focus, clear focus on continuous improvement.
Clear focus.
In the effort to just not repeat ourselves.
Yep.
Student focus isn't everything we do is the best for students, right? Is that covered in our first sentence? Every Mill Valley School District student is at the center of our work. I just don't want to-
I do like the quote, "Is it best for students?" I don't know if there's somewhere else we could put it, but I kind of like that as like a, you know, like, if I bring up something and you're like, but is that best for students? Like, maybe put it somewhere else.
Maybe the beginning of it is, "What is best for every Mill Valley District student is at the center of our work."
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Um, and then the same, you know, later on, like, our goal, equity for all students, high achieving students. I just don't want to, you know, I'm trying to condense this to, if we've said it once, and it-
Not to say it again.
Not to say it again, especially if it's-
Do we have, uh, okay.
Sorry, Kimberly, I am typing together with you.
I think equity for all students is slightly different than what's said above.
What's that? Equity for, okay, no, I know.
I think it's slightly different, so I think I would like to keep it, because there, equity across the district, but then also that, um, yeah, I think I, I-
You know, like, happy and engaged students could be covered, and if there's a well-rounded, well-rounded curriculum across the district that supports children as global citizens and proprietor for the future, which-
I'm good with that, if you wanted to eliminate.
Isn't necessarily meaning happy and engaged students, but they're related, you know?
I'm, I'm good with that, if you wanted to eliminate.
So I'm just trying to pare down, if we don't, if we don't need to repeat it, let's, you know.
Mm-hmm. Me, Kimberly. Um, go down. Keep going.
Uh, okay.
A little wordsmithing, would it make, be stronger if what is best for every Mill Valley student, um, for every Mill Valley student is at the center of our work?
Can I add a little quotes? Do you mind?
Yeah, so you say, put a question mark, and then, whoa, and then that-
Is the center of our work?
Yeah, clarifies.
There.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, thank you.
Sorry, Kimberly had added a question mark, and I think I took that out.
An Oxford comma, you guys.
Oh, I love Oxford commas.
So even, like, under our values, clear focus on continuous improvement, that's informed by effective governance practice, we provide high-level accountability, transparency, and oversight. Do we repeat, with every Mill Valley School District, the center of our work?
No.
Yeah.
I think, and it's at oversight, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I just, oops.
Can I add one more?
Yes.
For my sake, that secure learning environment, that's, you know, we, we're trying to come up with more goals, oversight thing.
Mm-hmm. I'm going to pull that from down below and move it up. Oh, Michelle?
Oh, okay.
I'm just going to move it from below up, if you don't mind.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm not touching my computer, just letting you know.
I do, I do love Google documents for collaboration.
Okay.
Oh, the font's too big, I'm just kidding.
It is, it does bother me, don't worry, we'll figure it out. Um, no, but Yoonhee, that's good. I just moved it from the below, so we later don't have a duplicate, too.
Should we take out across the district and well-rounded?
Take out student focus, is everything we do is the best for students, because we covered it in our first, okay.
Yes, yes.
I like the data evidence.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so ensuring transparency with community inclusion, both in and out, feedback from full breadth of community, can we cover that in that first value, or is that?
Sorry, which one? Ensuring transparency?
Ensuring transparency with community inclusion, both in and out, feedback from full breadth of community stakeholders. Is there a way to, we talked about accountability and transparency in the first sentence, and I'm just wondering-
How about encourage, add, um, we provide high-level accountability, transparency, encourage feedback, or, and oversight, and encourage feedback, something like that, or encourage-
From all community stakeholders.
Welcome?
Yes, and oversight, I like that. And welcome-
Yeah.
-feedback from our community.
Yeah.
So I'm going to delete now this part.
Insurance, yeah.
Collaboration amongst the board, like, do we want to-
The collaboration in order to help one another be better, do we cover that in our goal?
Yes, I think so.
I think we could just take it out, right?
Yes, I agree.
Young He, can you say that again?
Can we, can we say, as superintendent, a goal, it should not just be staff teachers, but superintendent, that feel they are professionally supported?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think we can combine the last two bullet points into one, superintendent, staff, teachers, and-
I'm good with that.
Better professionally supported, is values, yeah.
Teacher will feel they are professionally supported, heard and helped.
Yes?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for having that comment.
Oh, you know what? Um, the students who feel they belong and not, there was something lower down, inclusive, um, I like the word inclusive. Have we, it's down below, um, where we have equitable and inclusive environment. Um, is there a way to tie that to students who belong, who feel, um, promoting an inclusive environment where students feel they belong?
So my saying that, that secure and inclusive learning environment, that's kind of covered, right?
Yeah, but, but belonging is different than-
Collaboration amongst the board, like, uh, do we want to...
The collaboration in order to help one another be better, do we cover that in our goal? Or do we have a board that works with superintendent?
Yes, I think so.
I think we could just take it out, right?
Yes, I agree.
Young He, can you say that again?
Can we, can we say, as superintendent, a goal, it should not just be staff teachers, but superintendent that feel they are professionally supported?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think we can combine the last two bullet points into one, superintendent, staff, teachers.
I'm good with that.
That are professionally supported, is values, yeah.
Yes?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for having that comment.
Oh, you know what, um, the students who feel they belong and not, there was something lower down, inclusive, um... I like the word inclusive, have we, it's down below, um, where we have equitable and inclusive environment. Um, is there a way to tie that to students who belong, who feel, um... Promoting an inclusive environment where students feel they belong?
They provide safe, that they ensure an inclusive learning environment, that kind of covers it, right?
Yeah, but belonging is different than being included, and that's...
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll leave those.
Will safe and secure and inclusive learning environment?
So now, under the three focus areas, it feels like we've covered this, right?
So, can we, can we...
Yeah, is everybody good with the three focus area?
We need to need that.
Since it's incorporated elsewhere, okay.
So we don't have the words priorities here, is it our goals or these are priorities?
I think goals and priorities are the same thing in this manner. And should we take out in no particular order in that, our goal?
Maybe, sorry, I made it S, but it's not her goal.
And our values?
Yes?
Yes.
So first and second bullet point, inclusive focus, and this is my highest priority, which teacher, teacher speaking, can we say, instead of repeating bullet points, can we take up this as not academic excellence?
Nope, sorry, I should make sure everyone's good with that first.
Sure.
I mean, then should it be decisions driven by data and evidence?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything we're missing?
So do we need to discuss this paragraph on student full year progress? Because I do also...
That was my out-of-thinking.
Okay.
An experienced middle school parent, and I don't, I don't feel qualified to weigh in beyond this without talking to a teacher, frankly. You know, because that's just my experience. Doesn't mean it's everyone's experience. And it doesn't mean it's my truth, but that's it. You know, does that make sense?
No, it totally does, but I think it's helpful to know, because like, I know that I, I would disagree with this. Like, if somebody said, "Oh, your eighth grader is, you know, at a ninth grade math, and therefore, we don't feel that we need to move them up because they're already ahead." To me is not the direction that I'd like to see for the district.
But in my experience, that conversation doesn't quite go like that anyway.
And maybe, and maybe when it comes to this being a vision statement, that's one of those lofty goals where we want to ensure that there is that challenge at all levels. So even if you are kind of maxing, maxing out at the grade level, that you don't just sit there and twiddle your thumbs, that you're given those challenges that we're pushing for that.
And maybe that's covered in our values and our goals. I just, so this is just, we're getting into kind of nitty-gritty language here, and, and I would, you know, shy away from putting that into our overall vision statement, because I think it's too specific.
I definitely appreciate.
It was here, so I just want to make sure it didn't feel like we didn't address it.
The background on, on that, you know.
And, and that was helpful, and I did, when I was reading through, I was like, this is probably Sharon's input. Um, but it's helpful to see it from that perspective as well, and to, to have that balance across elementary and middle school, because they are different, you know, different beast.
They're different beasts.
And I think our overarching vision for the whole district can, can still be at that higher level, and maybe there just needs to be nuances in how the administration, the teachers go about making sure those, that vision and those goals are achieved. So, but this is, this is helpful to kind of take that lens and make sure we're looking from that perspective at the student level as well.
So I'm just trying to make sure, though, because we're saying in here that we, um, I guess maybe we're not. Um, are we, are we not having the one years' growth concept anymore?
Well, I think that it's, that that's starting to get into more administrative purview, perhaps. I think as a board, we can ask those questions about that in terms of detail. But if we have an emphasis on academic excellence, but do we want to add anything else? I mean, that might get to your point, so academic excellence, um...
Maybe emphasis on academic excellence where students are challenged at every level?
Yes. Yeah, it's another way of saying differentiated learning, where students are challenged at every level. That's, and that's... Yes, we can hear you.
No, I kind of agree, you know, instead of saying one there, I think what you were saying is differentiated learning, that challenging all children.
I'm hesitant to put specific language like that into our overall vision statement without full understanding by all of us exactly how that affects all of our grades, so.
I guess I don't, yes.
I don't, I don't know, Kimberly, if you would be comfortable adding here, because I know this has been part of your, your vision as well for the district, and has been part of that, not just newly introduced this evening, so maybe you can help shed some light and kind of give us from yours and the district's perspective.
Well, I would say that, um, children can't cap out at eighth grade. Um, you know, there could be different arguments potentially made at high school level, um, but even there, we could probably push and say that there's college level and graduate work and beyond. So I would say that certainly all kids could be challenged to exceed beyond their current levels. And we shouldn't put a ceiling on that.
So I think we could focus on that, kind of have it as a bigger, you know, more overarching, rather than getting into like, the, the specific language used to achieve that.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So, right now, they've, we've added our, um, "Challenged at every level," are you comfortable with that? Okay.
But I'm, I'm a little, I want to sit back for a minute, because they're challenged at every level. I think, what, what differentiation means is that every child is getting what they need.
Mm-hmm.
And it is a term that's used a lot, um, challenged at every level. I, I love the way it reads, but then when I think about it, how, how do we hold ourselves accountable to that? Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if it's tight enough, if it's strong enough.
So should it say through differentiated learning?
Through differentiated learning, yes, challenged at every level, through differentiated learning. And I don't think, I don't think we're going to run into trouble with that with our, our teaching staff.
If you're the teacher.
They may push back, but the, this is what we do in classrooms, is we're challenging, I've seen it every day, of challenging students at every, you know, through differentiated learning, and, and there are different ways of doing that. So, and I think that that's, that's the crux of, that's the crux of equity, that's the crux of, um... The crux of our statement, right? We're focusing on every child.
I mean, that's definitely something that, when we're talking values, that's a value system that I believe strongly in that if a child, let's say, is ahead or behind, that our district should be meeting them, because it should not be that their parents have the resources to go get the private tutor, to go either way. It should be that our district is able to meet them where they are and keep them challenged and moving forward.
Mm-hmm. So we, are we good with that?
Yeah.
Young He says yes.
I get, I get caught up in the detail, which is why I was like, this is, and I literally wrote, it was taken out, I was like, this is my out-of-thinking, because that's...
And that's why I want to address it, because I do, I do think it's important if we're talking, if we're spending this time on a vision and values, that if we do have differences, we should kind of figure it out, because...
And I wouldn't even say this is some, a, a difference, to be honest, it's not. It's just more, it was my reality setting in for me, and I was like, wait, how does this apply? You know, and so I was like, walking it through my brain.
As somebody who like, who likes to play devil's advocate as well, I, I can, I can appreciate this, where it's like, how is this going to then translate?
I, yeah, I want to be, I want what, I want our vision and our goal to be realistic, 100%, right? We don't want to make it too, so lofty that we can't, you know, consistently achieve it. So, um, yeah, I just was getting, you know.
Could we take, could we take a moment to, in our own space, like, read it?
Yeah.
And, and give a moment?
Before we go to that, is there anything at the bottom part that we feel that we need to incorporate in before?
You mean on the original?
Yeah, see how we've left, um, there's like other, um, I just want to make sure everybody feels that they're, before we do our proofreading.
Sure, sure.
Everybody feels their points have been incorporated.
We, this one addresses fiscal health, and we don't have it in anywhere.
That's a good point.
You know, we can't forget.
No, absolutely.
So I think, I would, I would add that.
Maintaining a fiscally sound.
I would add that to our value.
Okay.
Right?
Should I just put it right underneath? Maintaining a fiscally sound.
And it, you know, specifically ensure fiscal health of the district to maintain academic excellence. So, um, it's not just being fiscally sound, it's doing it in such a way for...
Sorry, ensure the fiscal health of the district to maintain?
Academic excellence, that's what I'm just reading for random.
No reason to reinvent the wheel if somebody's done it right. They have assessments in here.
We have data-driven decisions by data and evidence.
That's good.
To achieve academic excellence, instead of maintain, achieve.
Got it.
And, um, we have nothing here on the planning and construction of new facilities, which for this board maybe need to be part of our priority, as specific to our board.
It is kind of specific to this board right now.
So maybe that needs to be another bullet.
Um, and... Monitoring and ensuring, oh, sorry, Young He, were you saying something?
But, but it, that doesn't address the planning and construction of the new facilities, and...
Sorry, I'm not writing, it's just sometimes when I write...
Holding ourselves accountable to overs, for oversight for that. I don't see that we're holding ourselves accountable.
What's the academic excellence version of construction?
No change orders.
So oversee the Measure G project to ensure timeliness and, um...
Responsible, responsible and appropriate, um...
Progress?
How about to ensure timeliness with responsible decisions? That's, that's kind of specific, yeah, I, no, it is.
Effective oversight. All right.
Uh, why don't you call it program instead of project, is that okay?
Good.
That's, it's been referred to that often.
Do you think timeliness matters in that one? Because if we fall a couple months behind, that could push a whole school year behind. So I do want to keep us on track.
Yeah, no, I do want to keep us on track, too, but, you know, um, in regards to that, it's like...
Maybe let's just keep it as effective oversight, because I think that effect, effective oversight includes...
Includes timeliness, yes.
Yeah.
So can we delete this stuff below?
I think so.
I think so.
Okay. So now we'll do our private reading part.
So we'll take a moment to read.
Do we mind if I make them just formatting the same?
Say it again.
Do you mind if I, so like, for example, the first, oops, not there, sorry. The first one should just say, "Focus on," and then "Provide high-level," like, so, okay.
Right.
Is it adopting a well-rounded curriculum?
This is missing a word, like, place, I'm, I don't know. Maybe emphasize academic, is that...
Yes, emphasize academic excellence.
Kimberly, do you see anything in here from a pedagogy, pedagogy point of view that's out of, um, bounds? You know?
Overstepping the board's bounds, boundaries?
You know, I think there is a distinction between what that support, or what those, um, provisions, or, you know, what it means to ensure, um, but I, I think they all align to the work that is going on. All of these in general would be supporting focus and supporting high-level accountability, supporting the emphasis on, um, all of this work. But to do it actively, I think as a board, is a good thing as well.
In the very second sentence, "As members of our board team," shouldn't just say "as members of the board"?
As members of our board, well, team suggests, for me, teams...
Isn't this just us?
Yes, but team suggests for me that, uh, it, it defines what kind of board we want to be.
I, I would hope it would be implied that we would all be acting as a team, as one unified, unified group.
I, I don't mind the word, though. It, it throws in the word collaboration without having to throw in the word collaboration to me. And I think it's, I don't think it's harming the sentence.
Okay, I am good with this.
I do have a question, we, yeah, we, um, I've heard consensus being discussed, and I don't see that word here. Is that something that we want to discuss? Or do we disagree with that? Because that's, there's different ways that boards can function. You know, you can have just healthy debate, and you vote, and, and then consensus is where you, you're asking your president to spend more time trying to navigate a, a discussion that might lead to consensus. So I, I'm just wondering what, what this board is looking for, actually, in their president. Is it consensus, is it?
I, I don't think it's necessarily president-specific. I think it's, it, it's all of us and how we treat each other as equals on the board, that we're all striving for consensus in the decisions that we're, that we're making, and we will strive to be active listeners and open to, and I... strive to be active listeners and open to, and I think it's included here, yes, with the...
To have a board that works together with...
Being respectful, listening to the opinion of others, so maybe can build in, you know, with a, with a goal towards, you know, with an eye towards consensus.
I mean, I'd be good with like, you know, striving for consensus where possible.
Right, because it's not always...
No, and I mean, I appreciate like last time when we had our, you know, you want a consensus, and I do think that there is a value, even when it could easily be a, you know, split vote, to try to have...
And what I meant by Natalie is just that the board, the board president, you know, in our, in our handbook, we can then refine, I mean, how much time are we going to have for discussion? And if discuss, and sometimes if it's, if it's set, then people have their positions, and then we vote. But if there's consensus, sometimes that's a different kind of way of having a conversation. So that's why I just wanted to bring it up.
I think that is going to always depend on the topic, frankly.
Okay.
And I think it's kind of like reading the board, topic, you know?
I think we should all be, you know, able to say like, hey, you know what? I think we're going to agree to disagree on this one, and let's move on.
Yeah, maybe table discussion if it's just not going anywhere or something.
I think this is a weird place to put it.
I'm trying.
Sorry, it doesn't fit that sentence.
You can move it.
I just don't, I would just put in values. I feel like it just, because this is, our goal is like, this is like who we're working with, and I feel like striving for consensus is more us together. Do you want to put in values, or? Oh, how about put in the first one? Focus on continuous improvement that is informed by effective governance practices and building consensus where possible.
That's good. That's good.
Okay.
All right. Are we calling it?
I'm good to call it.
I think this looks good.
Yun He?
Yun He, what do you think? Anything to add or anything to change?
No, I think ensuring the fiscal health of the district is a main priority of the board, and, and that goes through your votes for approving the budgets and any financial decisions of the district. Those do lie squarely on the board.
Yun He, are you concerned with the definition of the word ensure?
Do you prefer maintain the fiscal health?
Yeah, I like to maintain, because insurance is like...
The next pension crisis. Are other people good with maintain?
I'm okay with maintain. Any other refinements? Oh, this is exciting.
I know.
I don't think we even have to put draft on this. That was our goal, but I think we've, we've nailed it.
No, and I think this is great, because we can all hold each other accountable if we have deviations. I mean, this is, or if we're trying to build consensus.
Go back to it.
Go back to it to say, hey, I think this provides for safe and secure and inclusive learning environments, and that's why we should support this.
Fantastic. Well, are there any other comments or follow-through with our Mill Valley School District Board of Trustees? What are we calling this? Vision? Vision, value? Vision, values, and goals?
Sure.
All right. So it seems that we have consensus, that we have created our Mill Valley School District vision, values, and goals, and we have done so at 6:24 PM. I think with this, I'd like a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Well, I'm just reading, I'm just asking myself.
Oh, not yet.
Have we missed any thing? Have we missed any of our...
We have, we have, we have time.
Stakeholder groups, frankly.
And I do think, I'm comfortable saying this is a living document, so to the extent six months from now, we realize something needs to be added or modified. I definitely think we can, we want to improve ourselves, too. So if we see, see room to improve ourselves in making an update, we should feel free to do so.
Do we want to put that this is a living document somewhere here?
Yeah, why not? Mill Valley School Board of Trustees' vision, living vision.
Sounds like our trust, yeah.
I don't know, I don't...
Where, where would we put that? Here we go.
Maybe you just put like a last updated date, and then that way, if it changes, we just see the newest updated date or something.
So put a date at the bottom of this here, dated?
Yeah, I don't know that we need to add the language in, right? Let me just say...
Yeah, and then people will see, they'll say last updated, whenever we update it.
Nice.
We all know it's living, that's what matters, because we create it for ourselves.
That's right. How do we feel? Are we ready to adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We'll adjourn this meeting at 6:26. Thank you.
All right, all right. It's saved, it's there. Nice work.
Yun He, are you with us? If we can test to make sure that trustee Yun He's with us, then we can begin.